Next, our school showcase is preschool.
All right. How do you have clicker? Do you have clicker?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. There you go. Yes, all right, very good. Got it? Okay, we're good, I think. I think it was on, actually. Great, right. All right, so I'm Diane Zidane and I'm here to present on the preschool programs that we have. And last Saturday, we actually had, first time, we had an open house on a Saturday, and we had over 100 people come, over 30 families signed in. Most families came with mom and a partner, or dad, and, you know, two or three kids, and it was really very successful. We probably, we took in almost everyone who came in, signed up, or have come back today and signed up sometime this week. So it was a great experience, and we'll probably just build on that. We'll also be representing, be represented at the two kindergarten roundhouse also, but we'll be available for tours at Harvest Swanson, and then we'll have a table at Oakwood. So our registration's going really well this year. So this is, oh, I forgot something. So March is reading month. You've probably seen that. Have you seen any of the flyers? This is something that all the preschool teachers have handed out to their parents to give them an idea of what they can do with their children to be supportive and to encourage reading through the entire month. So the children with their parents do the activity for that day, they fill it in, and at the end of the month, they're gonna bring it in and, you know, celebrate reading. That's the same day that they have literacy. Day going out where parents start coming in, reading stories, and doing activities with their children on the last day of the month. So one of the things that I wanted to point out, we're always talking about reading, children being ready for third grade reading scores and taking the assessments, and I wanted to point out that part of our curriculum is reading. It's literacy, it's communication, and it's language. And these are the key developmental indicators which are, is part of our curriculum. Comprehension and understanding language, the interaction between adults and children, speaking and expressing themselves using that language, vocabulary, and increasing the vocabulary, increasing their words and their phrases, so that what they say, they can also then learn to write and read. Phonological awareness and identifying sounds in the spoken language, which is exactly one of the kindergarten goals and part of their curriculum, and then alphabet, alphabetic knowledge, identifying names of letters and their sounds. So those are some of the goals that we have. They also, reading and children learning to read for pleasure and information, concepts of print, knowing that a book goes a certain way, and being able to demonstrate that knowledge in the environment of print with books and sciences that are around. Book knowledge and all about books, what's a part of the book, what's the title of the book, what do the pictures in the book tell you? They're part of the story. And then writing and using different language for different purposes. If you go into any of our classrooms, you'll see the house area, and in the house area there's paper and pencil. Why? Because, you know, waitresses take your orders. So they're taking your order when they're playing waitress, or when they're asking you what you want to eat. So they use those, reading in lots of different ways. It's reading month, and I gave you a copy of the calendar. We want literacy to be in family, at school, throughout while they're in the car. We talked about how, you know, you'll see parents and they'll give kids a video to watch in the car, you know? There's so much literacy out there. Talk about the signs that you're passing by and encourage them. So every week newsletters go home from our teachers, and they give teachers, or as parents, an idea of a connection, what they can do at home that's connecting with the curriculum at school. And those are great parent connections, and that's through the weekly newsletter. We invite parents to literacy day, and then they also come to read at their, at their school and read to their children, both at home and at school. So that's the calendar I showed you. And just recently, we have an outside evaluator that comes and evaluates our preschools. That helps us, because we're such a high-quality preschool, they evaluate all the different parts and how we're presenting the curriculum and what we're doing with the curriculum and engagement with students. And one of the areas that they pointed out was that, this quarter, we get, we come three times a year, this quarter, one of the highest areas of growth was music, natural and physical world, and our phonological awareness. So it's showing that that's just more growth that we have in the area that we need for the literacy for all of our children. And then I just, you know, great pictures. These are children working in journals and small groups. They're writing, you know, these are three and four-year-olds, doing writing, sharing their books with others, and reading those books to them. These are experts in their top subjects. They wrote the book, so they know all about the book. These students are sharing their books with friends and staff while they act it out. We got, you know, toys that are acting out their stories and continue to work on that literacy. These are name puzzles, so teachers make up name puzzles. Students, if they know their name, they're just making the name up, and they're putting it in the right order, or they have a model of a name that they can continue. Because by the end of preschool, they shall be able to write the names that they do. And I just wanna thank you for the support. One of the pictures we had, one of the, I think it was brother-in-law, one of our preschool teachers came dressed up as Cat in the Hat, one of the actresses' birthday, Monday, and how they used music throughout the day. Any questions?
Make any questions?
Come to our preschool and see. We'll buzz you in, you just have to give clearance for Sean. Thank you.
Thank you. I have to say, last year we had the kids with those magnetic, like all the locks. I got them for my niece. And they were such a hit.
Oh, let me tell you, they are a hit.
Yeah, thank you very much. Congratulations on all the work you're doing there. Okay, next, we get the superintendent's report, safety and security.
Just gotta quickly go over, because it was in a work session, I'm just gonna go over quickly the recommendations that we came out of the last meeting on. I know somebody were here for part of that, but I'm just gonna go through them for our public meeting as well. We, we've been working for the last month since the last school shooting to take our, our safety and security measures to the next level in the district. We've done a full review internally with our administration, and the police department has done the same thing over the last month. We've come up with some recommendations that we think are gonna help keep our students safer in our district. So we started with the review, actually started last, last winter on this, so we've been looking at this for some time. We've just kinda kicked it into overdrive since the last incident. Our, we did a full review, looked at things like our preparedness, our follow-through procedures, facility issues, looked at things like mental health, communication, the ways that we can assist our, our first responders, and how can we report? When somebody knows that something's going on out in the community, have we done a good enough job of letting people know who to call, when, and how to do that? So we looked at all these different things. We have a series of recommendations here. These are a start. Every single building has things that are very specific to their building, but these are things district-wide that we're looking at doing. One is completing our training and our practice. And what we talked about in the work session is that practice, when you do drills, you can do them and check the box, or you can do them and make them really meaningful to staff and students. And it's us really following through, making sure that that training is meaningful, that our follow-through is really meaningful, and that we really are as prepared as possible, both on the student side as well as the staff side. We're also looking at doing a collaborative drill on August 29th with our staff, as well as the police and fire, doing a little bit more of a live situation before the students get in there, so that we are as prepared as possible. So those are some of the things we're looking there in recommendation one. Recommendation number two is something we've been looking forward to as a district, we're gonna move this up the list a little bit, is security cameras. 120 security cameras for each building, we're gonna get bids for the four buildings. This helps a great deal with law enforcement. It's something that they would be able to access remotely in the case of some issue that takes place in a building. The police department would be able to access those cameras and be able to communicate about, and they would be able to have eyes throughout our building. For us, we were already looking at this, this is a great thing for student discipline, for safety, for monitoring. There's many benefits to cameras inside of a building. We do have cameras, but we want it to be part of an integrated system that's able to be accessed remotely by our police department, as well as our administration. Our third one is about personnel. Our, our building secretaries, we talked about our, oftentimes the people that are left to screening visitors coming in and out of the building. Their location is different in each spot, but they wear so many hats. They're, you know, putting an ice pack on a kid's knee, they're helping a teacher, a kid's getting sick in the room. They're doing so many things, and security is one of so many things. So it's our belief that we need to have somebody who's dedicated to security and safety in each one of our buildings. And we're going to look at some of the options that we have. We have everything from a in-house hall monitor type person, to a security company, to the potential of having retired Oakland County Sheriff deputies, if that were able to work out in our buildings. So it depends on who the person is, but their primary goals will be screening guests, ensuring safety measures are followed through, and being available to help in the case that there are any security issues. Our third one has to do with proximity. In, in our buildings, our secretaries are left to do this screening. And when a person comes to the door, many of you have come to a door, there's a little small camera that may or may not show a person really well, and they do the best that they can. Well, the idea here is that we have a security station at each, at each entrance. For example, I'm just gonna demonstrate it here. I'm at Oakwood Elementary School, and the students are this way, okay? We have a set of doors here, and we have a set of doors here. We would put a security station inside that vestibule, right there. So the person who is screening me, I could buzz in, hello, I'm, you know, Mr. Outlaw, I'm here to pick up my daughter Hannah. I'm talking to the person that's looking at me directly, see, stuff all up and down here. We have a exchange, and if I'm, if I've met and I, you know, I'm on the list for picking up Hannah and everything, I get let in the building, I sign in, I show them my ID, I do whatever screening, and then if I meet the standards there, then I may enter Oakwood Elementary School. It also could be like a concierge, too. When we think about it, you can check that person, but you could also be a nice person to be welcoming to people. Welcome, so, welcome to Oakwood Elementary School, and hey, here's this, and it could be a greeting as well, so it could be a nice customer service piece as well. But the security stations, it's eyeball to eyeball, seeing that person for the best screening that we can possibly do. And that's where our security person would be located at most of the time. We have a group of all of our social workers, mental health people, under the direction of Diane Zidane, have been doing a review of our mental health procedures. How do we address mental health issues in the short run? How do we deal with crisis? But also, how do we monitor students over the years? How do we keep track of students and make sure that we keep tabs, especially when a student does something that's alarming? How do we know two or three years later that they're not having those similar thoughts that they may have had? So what is the, how is it that we follow up on that? So we're working on that, it's a really important piece of the puzzle, the mental health piece. And then at the end of the last meeting, I mentioned that it's really important, we have these hotlines, we have the Brandon hotline, and then there's a hotline called Okay to Say through the state, where you can call at any time of day, and then we're connected with law enforcement. So we all have eyes and ears, we all hear different things, we're on different social media. If we see something that's a concern, we have to act. We see something, and a student's on, on a page, and they have a gun, and they put some, you know, alarming thing, who do you call? So we need to do a really good job of making sure that people have access to the Okay to Say and our Brandon hotline, so that we can get immediate response. So that's mental health. And then there's a number of other recommendations that we've already done, or will be doing. Things like numbering entrances, which helps with our first responders. Door number one will always be the, you know, the main entrance, and goes counterclockwise. So the police are there, and they say, you know, we have a student injured, and they're at door number six. They know where they're going, and they can take ambulance directly there to help a student that might have had, be having a, you know, medical situation. So it's a real help for first responders. They didn't have access to all places throughout the district, so we've addressed that, and got them some keys and things like that, so they're in good shape there. We're talking about follow-through is one of the most important things that we're gonna do, is we're gonna do regular unannounced spot checks to make sure that we're following through with our procedures. And then there's a number of other things that we'll do, some people are gonna move from spots so that they can see better, and just some common sense things that we're going to do, picture banks for any concerned students. We have students that might be aggressive or whatnot, we wanna make sure that people know those students. If a student's been expelled from school, we wanna make sure that they were expelled from Brandon High School, that Oakwood and Harvest Swanson also have pictures, so that they know who those students are. And finally, we had a lot of feedback about the drop-off and pickup at the elementary level in particular, so we're going to be doing a full review there. And a lot of this is gonna be implemented fully in fall of 18, that's our deadline there. But we are going to do a number of these things much sooner than now. So that's a little bit, that's what we're working on. This is a start, but we're, we're gonna jump in with both feet and really try to make our schools as safe as possible. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Irvin. And thanks, Frank, for looking over for all the due done with working on this, because I know it's a work in progress. Okay, next, we're gonna have public comments and questions on agenda business.
Nothing on agenda items.
Okay, nothing on agenda. Okay, next, we go to the approval of our consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'm with the Brandon Board of Education, approve the consent agenda and present it. Support.
Okay, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
So if yes, say no. Okay, next, we will have our information and discussion items, and your finance report, Jan.
Yeah, tonight I'm going to talk about something we're really excited about. This summer, for the first time in a long time, we're gonna be, in addition to our community ed camps and that type of thing, science and all of those camps, we're starting summer academic program. So we rushed to get things together for tonight, with a beauty up, we back up, is our own Brandon teachers will be teaching every single one of these, so, which is wonderful. So we decided with conferences starting tonight, we really pushed to get all of the information out. Parents can start registering online tonight, but I just briefly wanted to give you an idea, I think it's, you know, hopefully it's going to really go over well. And we say that, of course, all students are welcome, but we're really hoping to get what we call a bubble kids, or just maybe a little extra push, all the way through advanced. But real briefly, summer math management, Jenny Euselman will be teaching that, grades third through fifth, and she's wonderful. Watch Us Grow is a summer reading. We, we have a at-risk-reading program by invitation only. This will be different than that, and that is for first through third grade. And then we have Bob Larson's running a coding camp, which is gonna be wonderful. That's five hours a day for a whole week, and it's called Code Smart Kids. And then we have a middle school, two different programs, at the middle school, two sessions. A lot going on at the middle school. The parents asked that we would really focus on some programs for them. So we have a Read, Read, Succeed, it's a literacy program, one for incoming sixth graders, and then a separate one for incoming seventh and eighth graders. And Laura Hickey, she's the reading or literacy interventionist assistant, is, she's with the district currently, she'll be running these programs. And then we have Tina Luchal, a teacher in the district for many years, is doing a writing camp. Again, we were asked to do a writing camp, I guess some other districts in Oakland University have the writing camp. So Tina is putting together a really great program for, last week of June, for writing camp, and that'll be five hours a day for five days, so a lot of hours in that. And then the last one, we have a middle school Make It Come, a summer math enrichment program. Again, a separate session for incoming sixth graders, and then a session for seventh and eighth graders. So really excited about this. I just understand there's a teacher who would like to do a writing camp for fourth and fifth graders, and so it's really, the fact that our staff is doing this and putting together some really good, meaningful programs, I think hopefully the parents will, will register and find it really helpful.
And we're hoping that the administration and staff will target, facilitate some of those students in hopes that we can get them aboard to continue the summer.
Yeah, in fact, you know, with testing out, we say, you know, of that, conferences going on, they can, they can talk to parents, and so they have the information now, mid-March, so we have, most of these are not starting until August, but plenty of time to get the word out and, and target the students. So it's working because our staff is, is involved and they want to do this, so.
Great, that's great news. Thank you. Anything else for finance report?
No, working on the budget for next year, we're doing grants, but, no, we'll be talking about that in our finance.
Okay, so. Then we have an education report from Diane Zidane, Kristy Span, and Debbie Brower. Academic intervention for Brandon school, Brandon students.
It's actually a perfect segue from what Jan is talking about in terms of the summer programming, the video summer programming that meets both at-risk and some learning needs, she just outlined. Debbie's going to bring up the PowerPoint, but really, our focus for you tonight is to talk about how we're meeting the needs of our students who really aren't progressing as we hope they should, or that are not really reaching their potential. We're trying to keep it pretty simple, very focused, math. You'll notice that we have two lines here, two rows, a few little struggles and strengths. We're really not gonna talk about strengths, that's just a reminder for you that we really do address those as well. Like I said, our focus tonight is on meeting the needs of our at-risk students. And you can see, if I'm looking at this, that by grade level, we really are attending to our students who are showing signs of struggle. Earlier on, interventionists and small group instruction, that's very, it's very intentional on a regular basis. By middle school, we're really doing that interventionist. At the high school level, we still have an interventionist, we now provide concept classes, we take those core classes, and really hone in on the most important standards and make sure that they understand those well, and then we're able to offer summer school once again this year.
Okay, in literacy, you can see that there's the strengths up there as well, and that grows K-12, so it's across the district. Some of the things that we do across elementary, the struggles, we have interventionist, small group instruction, we have literacy coaches that are working to improve everyone's practices, including their own. And then, of course, we will be offering summer school, K-3 this year in August, two weeks before we get back to school. And then, sixth, eighth, we have the interventionist. And then ninth, 12th, we have the interventionist and summer school.
Is there a class for this?
I'm sorry?
Is there a class for summer school?
For the ninth, 12th?
Yes, yes, for high school. For the K-3, it's done through a grant, so there's not the K-3, but yes, for high school. Those are gonna be through Community Ed, so yes, they would be costing them as well. But there are grants, BGYA is doing scholarships for students with, with financial needs so that they can have access to certain Community Ed classes.
And if the grants are related to struggling states, crack, or whatever, like this, which can get granted, because it's not, unless they're, you're working for those.
I have a question.
Yeah?
In the midst of interrupting your flow. When it gets to sixth, sixth through eighth, on both math and literacy, this isn't even a critical inquiry, it's just, I don't understand why. Sixth through eighth, we just have interventionist. We go from a series of K-12 of support, fourth through fifth, we have a series of support. And then it just is notable, we get to sixth, to K-8, we have interventionist.
Well, part of that is the scheduling, because those, those classes, and they go, you know, for a certain amount of time. And some of that intervention is in the classroom, so they are in the classroom as well, and there could be small group. The only reason that's not up there across the board is because I know K-5, we have the structured, focused intervention that's part of our literacy.
The scheduling, the way that class.
But yes, the interventionist is some, is something that, intervention can take place in the classroom and outside of the classroom, and a lot of it does take place outside of the classroom because of scheduling and the needs for students, and working around their schedules and making sure that they can get that time minute other times during the day.
But it's inside and outside of the day?
Yes, yes, it is.
And I guess what I'm sort of thinking about of that is, I see third graders got summer school, and then summer school doesn't show up till that grade again. Is there any reason we don't have summer school for every grade?
We do now, but Jan is doing a Community Ed. She's really been targeting middle school, because that was a soft spot for outside of the school day, and a lot for those fourth through eighth graders that are through that Community Ed.
Any other questions on that? Okay, another thing that we're doing in K-12 is, we are doing the student data meetings. We've talked about those in previous board meetings, but those continue, and they continue to evolve, and they happen at least one time a month. And that's when teachers come together and the focus is looking at students' work, talking about progress, looking at actual, sometimes just numbers, sometimes it's actual artifacts, talking about strategies and interventions, and it's really developing teachers' practices and really focusing on how to help our students. Ultimately, the goal is to walk away with a common goal, a common area to focus with students, and take that back into the classroom, and that's where working with the interventionist comes in. And I feel like that's, we're really making progress in that area. And we do try to focus on explicit instruction and talk about that, too. So we are doing that across the board, K-12. Do you have any questions about those student data meetings?
I'm even wearing my tall shoes, but I still leave it lightened down. So multi-tiered assistance of support is what we do for all, all students, we are, even in preschool. These are students who might have some needs, we come together as a group about once every six weeks or so. Teachers bring names to the group and talk about the interventions they're doing, and share the data that they put together. And then at those meetings, they can be, the other grade-level teachers are there. Also, there's usually special ed teachers, psychologists, teacher consultants, speech-language therapists, interventionist coaches, there's a whole team of people, and they sort of brainstorm. So if that intervention's not working, they might come up with another intervention to try, or maybe they're making some progress and they may tweak it, so that they can see more progress. If the intervention is working, they wanna continue working on that and to show the progress to that intervention. If it's not working after six or eight weeks, then they might try another intervention. The idea is that they are working on specific skills and collecting the data on that specific skill, see if there's the growth in that student area. So that skill then usually ties in with either reading or math. And so the MTSS teams come together to support the teachers with these students that are struggling. It also works on, not just reading and math, but also behavioral concerns, and so they work on behavior plans together, and they're responsible, and that's what the teams do together. Any questions about that? That goes on, like I said, preschool through high school, very tight programming in the elementary, it's been going on a long time. Caitlin Talon, who is our school psychologist, has really taken the lead to put that into the high school and middle school, and sort of systemic throughout the district. We're also looking at that, that was in, put in place, our protocol was put in place about two and a half years ago, and we're reviewing that next month, actually next week, excuse me.
A question, what determines successful?
So if you have a goal of a student who is looking at phonetic awareness, all right, and at, at the beginning, they're like, you know, they only know three sounds and three letters, and it's not going, and someone says, well, let's try this, try this, and so the teacher works on it. They focus on that skill, maybe five or 10 minutes or whatever, every day, maybe an interventionist is doing it, maybe the co-teacher's doing it, special ed teachers might be working on it, and they do it every single day consistently. They take data every week, okay, they, they focus monitor. They see that, okay, this week, now they're up to five, next week they're up to 10, that's progress. So they keep the data to show the progress. Now, if that intervention's, you know, the first week, they might know four, and the next week they might know only six, and next week they only know seven, that might not be the right intervention. So we then take a look at another intervention that's working with those students' strengths, so that we're targeting an area that's gonna help them be successful. So that's why that progress monitoring is really important.
I just saw a quick hand, go ahead, Burke.
We might not have the parents brought in on something like this, because you're talking about a six-week thing, and I don't see anywhere where the parents.
So parents should be made aware of any, any intervention that's going on, parents will be made aware of initially. When you, you've gotten letters about the IRA, so you know that there's an intervention going on, then you get the letters regarding their reading plans. If a student is in the MTSS process, then the general teachers, it is their role and responsibility to make sure that parents know that this is an area of concern, and we're working on it, and these are interventions we're working on. You may not know the exact intervention, because, like, again, that might change, if it's not being successful, we're gonna change it and try something different. But parents should definitely be made aware of, as soon as there's a concern that the teacher has. Any other questions?
Okay, that's a good segue into the individual reading improvement plan, which Diane just called the IRA. Basically, that's created for any K-3 student. Basically, that's created for any K-3 student that shows a reading deficiency, and that describes intervention to be provided. But more importantly, it is that communication home, that's that school home compact, and it involves a student, and it basically talks about what's happening at school to target a specific area for reading, and what we're doing, and gave some ideas for what parents can do at home, how to help at home, and also just remind everybody of the timeline and how that's going. So those went out this year, and those are a work in progress, and as students make progress, those can be changed as well. Any questions about that?
As you saw, those charts that we had at the beginning, where there was the struggling students and the success students, just the idea that all students, we want them always successful, and we want them also to work towards their potential. And so everyone is getting individualization, differentiation in small groups in their instruction. It may be those groups that are heavy enrichment in the honors math classes, and it might be those groups who are working on phonetic awareness or at the level of their reading, so that they get those small groups, and it's being differentiated for them. The I-RIS that we talked about, coaching the teachers to support them to their highest quality, using research-based instruction. Debbie's been working with the coaches, and the coaches are working with the teachers. So the teachers are improving their instruction so that that will support student success. And then, of course, through the MTSs process that we're talking about. And all these decisions are data-driven. So when you talk about, how do I know they're being successful? They are doing focus monitoring on a weekly and daily basis. And some of my speech therapists are doing MTSs, see if a kid really needs speech therapy, and they're working with them. They have daily reports on how successful they've been, okay? So every single day or week, they have a progress monitoring to see the success that they're doing, using the strategy that they're using. And that is what's driving the decisions that we're using to support students' growth.
I guess I have a question then off of that, and it's probably more for the higher grades. The N W E A is coming up. Is that not one of our levels of whether this was successful or not? Are we looking at that they must do well on that and the SAT?
Yes. Those are broader-based ones, okay? But when you're talking about an intervention, you want to make sure that that intervention is being successful also. So they're monitoring the intervention and the success of that specific goal, but those goals are then, in fact, to support greater gains in both the N W E A, the SAT, the MCEP, all those tests that we take.
Just to close, this final slide was really just up for your handouts, that we use a lot of these words all the time, and sometimes it's confusing, so it wasn't really a discussion point, as you see it up there. Just a reference point for you.
Ask the team to come forward, because this is one of our big pillars this year. We're really focusing in on having the highest-quality instruction across the district this year. We're doing all kinds of things in that area, but when kids are not on track for success, or they're not meeting their potential, we have to intervene. And we've been talking about this constantly as a district, and these are the types of things that we're doing. MTSs, a lot of times you think there are students that are struggling with just basic reading, even in, you know, that have disabilities. We have students that are on the higher end, that maybe I-RIS is in the 92nd percentile in the fall, and I dropped to 75th percentile in the winter. The question has to be, what are we doing to intervene? They're going backwards. So as a system, we're really trying to have a commitment to intervening when students are not just being, like, below proficiency, but when they're showing backwards trend in their academic progress. So the team's doing a great job, three of them are all doing a great job of leading their teams, all of our principals, our teachers are all on board, so I just greatly appreciate them.
Thank you.
Let's do it on that to Jedidiah.
Okay. Next, I have our action items. Do I have a motion to approve the Brandon Rowland Youth Association resolution?
I move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the B G Y A resolution as presented.
And any discussion?
Can I ask Kristi to come forward? She's represented from B G Y A, just to do a quick summary of what this is.
Sure. See, as part of our bylaws at the county level, we need to make sure that we have actual board recognition of all of the people that participate regularly on the Brandon Rowland Youth Systems Board in service of our students. This is really just a formality for us to bring this before you today, and it really just ensures that publicly we all recognize that we're working together as a team, and not as a spread.
And how supportive they have been to the students.
They have been. I'll tell you what, we are so fortunate to have such committed, thoughtful advocates for our students in this community, so fortunate.
And we're coming up April 25th, 26th for the...
It's on, that Thursday, whatever that Thursday is.
Thursday, there's a recognition night. Oh, my gosh, just over here, so.
Thank you for having me, Dan.
Anything else, discussions? Okay, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Anybody against? Okay, the motion passes. Next, I need approval for the eighth-grade out-of-state trip to Cedar Point. Could I have a motion, please?
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the eighth-grade out-of-state trip to Cedar Point in Sandusky, Ohio, June 11th, 2018. Senate, support.
Any discussion?
This is the, they do this every single year, so this is the same one as every year.
Okay. All those in favor say yes? Yes, those against? Okay, could I have approval for the Business Professionals of America trip?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the Business Professionals of America overnight trip to the Business Professionals of America State Leadership Conference in Grand Rapids, Michigan, March 15th through 18th. Yes, Ron.
Is there any discussion?
Can I ask Carrie Leslie and Noah Cox to come forward?
Yep, they'll have them.
My students like to speak. Thank you, this is Noah Cox and Kylie Claxton.
Hello.
They just returned from the trip that you just approved, thank you so much. They did a great job, and I'm just so very proud of them.
All right, so hi, I'm Kylie Claxton. I'm actually Brandon BPA's Vice President of our chapter this year, so I thought I'd just go through a couple of the accomplishments we've achieved this year. We actually began Froyo Shop in high school, I don't know if everybody's heard about that. And Zestin's doing well fundraising for us to send, help send Noah and myself to nationals, and also to send everybody to states this year. We've also done a lot of work, working with the local businesses to get corporate sponsorships and help out fundraising as well. This year, we sent a high number of states, or a high number of students to states, I believe 14 or 15, which is a very high number compared to previous years. And we also have a record number of two students making it to nationals, and that would be Noah and myself. So anyway, here's Noah Cox, and please, we'll talk about nationals a little bit for you.
So I just wanted, you guys obviously at this point know who I am, but just Noah Cox. So it's an honor to be here. As Kylie mentioned, there's a lot of great things we did this year. So the next step for us is going to nationals. Nationals this year will be in Dallas, Texas. We're looking at somewhere between the 8th or 9th of May through the 13th of May, and then during there, we're looking to do not only just competitions that we have placed in our, going to the next level on, but also a couple of business enrichment opportunities for us to learn more about it. Obviously, I'm so passionate about, obviously. So I guess the next thing is requesting for you guys approval to do that. So it looks to me about three school days we're missing this year, and then more formal paperwork is to come.
We're a great opportunity.
Yeah, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for us?
I was just going to say, Noah was just elected to a statewide as the Executive Vice President of the entire state for Business Professionals.
Well, it sounds really good. I said I will probably get that request on May 15th.
Hopefully, a little bit sooner, yeah.
Well, congratulations, a great job, you and the other 13, 14 that went along, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of the business trip or for the Business Professionals of America trip, say yes?
Yes.
Those against, say no. Okay, could I have a motion for the Oakland County Parent Advisory Committee representatives?
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the following parents' appointments. Representatives for the Oakland County Parent Advisory Committee, Lorraine Lucas and Perry Switovich, support.
Okay, good discussion.
This is, we have representatives that go to Oakland County that serve on this every year, they've been our representatives for over the years. Diana, do you have anything you wanted to say?
No, they're just great parents, and I've been looking for ones to replace them because they're sort of turning the age out of children, so.
Their children are aging out.
Their children are aging out, so, but they're awesome, and they help us with our websites and the email that we put out, and are great representatives and a great advocate for this.
If somebody becomes interested, what's their first step?
Have them call me, email.
Okay, is it answered, lady to get to?
There you go. Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor and approve the Oakland County Parents Advisory Committee representatives, say yes?
Yes.
Those against, say no. That's approved. The approval of the Brandon High School STEM program overnight trip to state bridge competition. Could I have a motion, please?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the Brandon High School STEM freshman classes overnight trip to Grand Rapids, Michigan, April 30th through May 1st, 2018, for the MDOT track state bridge competition as presented.
Okay, discussion?
Mr. Stevens, do you have any comments?
Not any real comments, but as you, great competition, as you probably heard from last year, we had three girls, all freshmen, go to the national competition and compete in Maine, so it's a great competition for our kids.
This is exciting, yeah. In fact, remember last year, we had a great, they did great there, so. Okay, all those in favor of saying, the motion, say yes? Yes. Those against, say no. The motion passes. Okay, next is the approval of the Brandon High School STEM program out-of-state trip to the national bridge competition. Do I have a motion, please?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the Brandon High School STEM freshman classes out-of-state trip to Franklin, Tennessee, May 20th through the 24th, 2018, for the national bridge competition as presented. Support.
Any discussion on that, Dan?
So no, nobody's made it yet, but we're hopeful, so that's why we're coming to you tonight to ask to go on this trip, because we're hopeful that we'll have at least as many, if not more than, one team go to this competition.
Sounds great. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those against, say no. That motion passes. Okay, then, the approval of early-middle college in partnership with the University of Michigan. Could I have a motion, please?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the early-middle college partnership with the University of Michigan, Plin, as presented.
Support.
Okay, discussion, Kristi?
Ask Kristi to talk about this. We've had the DEEP program for several years here, we're taking it to the next level, so Kristi's going to go through a little bit about what we're currently doing and what this proposal is really doing, because what will lead to... Normally, we would have talked about this at a work session, but this is something that has come up too late from the game, and it's time-sensitive, so checking this opportunity to fill in the blanks. Thank you, Kristi.
And as I've outlined just that, you know, greatly, this is almost a formality, we already have our students participating and doing involvement and have for a number of years, and in particular in Clarkston with the DEEP program. However, no, I didn't get that part. Because they're doing well, they're already considered college students, right? And we know this. And Plin has been doing this for a while, they've been partnering with 21 different school districts for early-middle college. When we take a look at early-middle college versus DEEP, both include juniors and seniors, DEEP specifically juniors and seniors, if they start as a senior, they only have one year's worth of credits that they can accumulate at the college level. If they do start as juniors, then they have two years. There is not a 13th year, and this is really the pivot point between DEEP and early college. With early college, you have to start a new junior year, you participate both as a junior and as a senior, but then you also have a 13th year of school that you're committed to, so that you actually graduate from high school at the conclusion of your 13th with your high school diploma, typically also with an associate's degree, and with upwards of 50 college credits at a greatly reduced fee for our students. Very, very exciting for our students to be able to do that, to be engaged in this. Just as an aside, we make the commitment at 11th grade, but if they get to the point at the end of their, in senior year, that they really don't want to go to the 13th year, we can cove them out of that system and they can be done, so it's, they're not stuck. Yes.
Just adding on, the big thing here is there's huge financial benefits for the students that participate in this. They're getting University of Michigan Plin credit for a fraction of the cost of the credits that would cost them later on. That's a big driver. Just bring it up.
Well, in fact, the benefit, the value is about $22,000, $23,000, and the cost to our students over the course of those three years is about $6,000. So it is a huge benefit for them, and as they, at the freshman level, once they hit year 13, they are eligible for the same grants and scholarships that the girl would have been as freshmen starting in college. So those are huge benefits. Not to mention that it helps our students become comfortable with the rigor and the pacing of college courses, with the support of academic advising around them, with their high school around them. U of M does a nice job with the advising as well, so it's just, it's a win-win-win. In fact, I listened to students who participated, and they said that while their high school GPA might have been a little bit lower initially when they first came on board, once they started taking the college classes, they felt the need to, like, really get their game on a little bit, as they sat there with other adults. They thought, okay, we've got to really pull this together. So they really are motivated by these opportunities. So if you take a look at it, year one, you're in high school, and you take four college courses. On this essential, which you do two courses in the fall, two courses in the winter. At the 12th grade level, same thing, you have your high school courses, and you have two college courses in the fall and the winter. By the time you hit that year 13, you're taking a full load, 12 credits in each semester. So, yes.
Just our hope is that we would have enough students in this that it wouldn't say Clarkston High School. We are partners with Clarkston, Holly, and Brandon are partners in this. They, Clarkston has the most students, so it's housed there right now. We only have five. We can get enough of our own, then we can host our own classes, and that's our hope for the long-term in this program.
And actually, in talking to Clarkston with our partnership, that's their hope also. They would like to be able to send some of their students to us, and that's so that we can expand the offerings from the humanities, business, engineering, and science pathways that we have set up right now. We would like to expand that, and, you know, they're kind of back on the channel, so we would like to still overhear, both of us would. Student services are included in this. Once our students are part of this, they have access to the library, they have access to the rec center, they have access to the writing center, they have access to academic advising. So again, just win-win. They do honor our spring break, they honor our snow days. I already told you that financially, I mean, the value's almost $23,000, and, you know, the ultimate cost for our students is about $6,000 plus the cost of classwork, so. What we need for you to do tonight is to approve this ship from just DEEP to early-middle college, and then I will be able to complete the application process, submit that to the state, and we'll continue to work with you and Plin and Clarkston, help our kids to, you know, get their associate's degrees part of their high school experience.
Would it start as early as, yes, September? Would they come in juniors?
Yeah.
I mean, the students that are interested already.
Yes.
They're waiting for us.
Any questions from anybody? Okay, thank you, Kristi. Okay, all those in favor of the early-middle college partnership with the U of M Michigan Plin, say yes?
Yes.
Those against, say no. Okay, motion approved. Okay, now we'll see who has signed up for citizen input. Yeah, I have this one, this one. Yeah, I have this one. Here, just to remind people, what we do is, we do ask that you keep it to three minutes. You know, a lot of people, I think, want to talk, so we try to give them that opportunity, and three minutes, we thought, again, from the beginning, was reasonable for everybody, but we just ask that you stay with that. But I have Pat Pierce, and if you would say your name and address when you come up to the podium, that would be great, so we got that.
Hi, Pat. Welcome. Thank you. I live in Brandon Township, I'm on Satchel Road. I've lived in the community almost 30 years. Ms. Janine and Ms. April have handed you a packet on psychopathization and negative effects on school districts in our community. on school districts and our community, please take the time to read it, it's good information. I'm not going to stand up here and talk, I'd really like you to read your packets, and I'd also like you to thank you for addressing the security issues in our school, it's a plan that really needs to be improved.
I will, and, okay, only because I feel like I'm still learning. Are you a bus driver?
I am, I'm a bus driver 22 years.
Okay, 22 years.
Yes, and I'm also reading.
We've been getting emails, and I think I've gotten at least one, maybe two phone calls, you know, that I'm trying, if I think there's one, I've not responded yet, I saw it sitting there, I just didn't get a chance to, but I, we are getting them, and we are reading them, I still don't think you're on deaf ears, and we will look at this, because I know we got that other packet that we looked through, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, I have Steve Pierce. Welcome, Steve.
I'm Steve Pierce, I'm Pat Pierce's husband, I live at 1120 South Sashaw, and when I heard that Matt wanted to curtail, curtail these people from speaking at this meeting, I said, that's wrong, we need just the opposite, we want people in the community to bring up ideas and issues in a forum in a meeting like this, not try to curtail it or push it away just because they don't agree with what your position is, they still have a right to speak and express their ideas in an open forum among the Board of Education, that's what we want to do, we want them to be able to speak, and you know, that is at the last meeting, Diana, I'll keep it to three minutes, but you said, hey, we want the opposite too, we want a room full of people, we want you to express your ideas, in fact, I hope we have this many people for all our meetings, and we get the community involved, that's what you want, Matt, whether they agree with your position or not, and when you do that in a business or a workplace, that's intimidation, and that's wrong to do.
I'm confused at what you're talking about.
I think, you know what I'm talking about, when Joe and Pat was in a meeting with you, you said, this is not about privatization, they can bring up whatever they want at these meetings, this is an open forum, they get three minutes to express their concerns, ideas, views, whatever, and that's how it should be, we're taxpayers of this community and citizens, so we have this right. There's my three minutes.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Sean Paul. And if you want to bring up that website again, you're welcome to do it, yes.
Oh, okay. Sean Paul here, this, 124 Van Row, I'm not very good at speaking, so, sorry. I'd like to talk about privatization as well, but I'm not here to talk about numbers, I'm here to talk about safety of the kids on the buses, because that's my job, mechanic, been there 13 years. I went through tech school for being a diesel mechanic, was, went to a graduate school for a national truck, I have over 30 certifications for a national, decently qualified for the job, but we've talked to a lot of different mechanics from a lot of different districts, and a lot of them that have come from districts who are privatized, and everyone has a horror story, and everything I keep hearing is how they're going to keep the same people, they're going to keep the same drivers, everything's going to be fine, well, it's not, because what they're going to do, especially in the garage, they're going to come in, they're going to bid out the cheapest parts possible to put on the school buses, they're going to get the cheapest oil, the cheapest fuel, well, as you know, Michigan's a horrible state to be in come winter time, okay? What happens in the fuel, if you get cheap fuel, or fuel without additives, it gels off, the buses do not start. I've been here 13 years, we've never had a problem with buses gelling, we've never had a problem with buses not starting in the winter time, a lot of other districts have, they've had to bring mechanics in all through the night to start their buses, just when it's in below zero conditions, because they're cheap, it doesn't work, these kids need to be on buses that are safe. We run very tight shift, we have very good police reports, except for the past couple of years, which that was for rust, not exactly our fault, it was more once again a money thing that wasn't wanting to be spent, but the tires on the buses, they're going to run the tires to the very, very bare minimum tread. The rear tires on a school bus, according to the state law, which is what these private companies will make sure is done, no matter who the employee is, is 230 seconds of an inch, do you realize how thin that is? It's barely more than a paper, would you run your car with your kids with 230 seconds of tread depth on the tires in the winter time in Michigan, our roads? I wouldn't, it's terrible, the brake shoes, they're going to run them down, it's the very, very bare minimum that they can. Also, would you do that on your own car with your own kids, let alone thousands of kids that are in these districts? No, these are not good practices, this company's coming here to make money, I perform a service, that's it, there's nothing in it for me except for making sure these kids are safe and doing my job, these companies are coming here to save money, and that's what they're going to do, they don't care about these kids, everything we've talked to, everything we've heard, it's a horror story, yeah, I may stay here, I don't know, but the fact is, even if I am, I'm still going to have to adhere to what they want to do, I still have to install the parts that they want me to install, I still have to do the extended services that they're going to do on our buses, it's a very horrible thing, you can come up with whatever little stuff you want to, at the end of the day, it's not safe for the kids. That seems my piece.
Thank you very much. Next, I have Mike and Connie Donlin.
Hello, I'm, you're Mike and Connie Donlin, 3916 Berg Road. I am speaking against privatization of the bus routes, and my main example is when my daughter was in 7th grade, she had, thought she forgot her flute at school, and the bus driver, Pat Pierce, took time out of her day to go up to the middle school to go to look for her flute, she thought she had left it outside her locker, fortunately, well, it wasn't there, but we did get the flute back. I do not see a private company taking time out of their day to go to do something for the benefit of the students.
Likewise, Mike Donlin, as Connie said, 3916 Berg Road, there is a very personal touch in the bus drivers we have here at Bryant and Brandon, being a Brandon graduate myself, I've seen it through all my life, and now through my kids' lives, so privatization's a tough decision, and it's a hard one to make, it's a hard one to even consider, some of the things I do in my job are also those considerations, and I do know that there's that personal touch, so, good luck with that, I wish all our bus drivers well, and I love each one of them that I've met in my life here at Brandon too as well, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Denise Van De Bosch. Welcome, Denise.
Hi, Denise Van De Bosch, 855 Viola, and I'm not a bus driver, I'm not a mechanic, and I actually don't even have children in the district anymore, but I will say that privatizing is not a good idea, and I'm asking you, what can we do to sway you into not even considering it? I mean, do you want me to get petitions signed, do you want me to get parents, do you want me to get more people at a meeting, you name it, I can do it, but I just don't think that we should risk, like they said, the safety of our kids, we've already made some big cuts in our district, I, from what I understand, someone very important to our district, as far as I'm concerned, is going to be leaving, so I don't think we need to lose our bus drivers right now, again, whatever I need to do to sway you to not privatize, I'm on it, so just let me know.
And I have to tell you, I did get handed a petition, so that one's already been done, so.
Oh, okay.
Yes, we'll get it, yeah, but, so that's already been done, so, if something comes to my mind, I'll call you.
I know you will.
Okay, thank you, Denise. And then I have Mary Ann Swanson, Swanson?
Hi, Anne Marie Swanson, 2011 Ranger, I have an arms-long, arm-length list of why I think this is, privatization's a terrible decision, but my one, one reason that I'm going to give you is my kids. You guys at the last meeting stated you don't want to make cuts that affect the children in the classroom, well, a few years ago, I know that you cut the teachers' salaries, and now you want to cut our bus drivers and try to get them to come back under less, for less money, I know personally, my bus driver probably can't afford to do that, she's already having to supplement from the last time this happened, today's my daughter's birthday, she wanted to come up here with me today and tell you guys how sad she would be if her bus driver was gone, she loves her bus driver, she feels comfortable with her bus drivers, and ultimately, the two adults that interact most with my children in the district are their teachers and their bus drivers, we need those people, they're important. I don't know if any of you have driven around town lately, if you have, you're going to notice a lot of signs in a lot of yards, on a lot of corners, and all those people are not in support of privatization, so if you want us to support you, you need to support us, we elected you guys to be our voice, and quite frankly, you won't get my vote for reelection if you're not a voice for us.
And then Sarah Allen, come on up.
Hi, I live on Nelson William, I contacted somebody in Goodrich, because it's always thrown in, oh, Goodrich did this, blah, 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 I said, hey, how was your experience? And she said, they lost my kid on the first day, the first day that the company worked for them, they lost my kid, no one knew who the kid was, because it was all new drivers, she had to meet the superintendent at the bus garage at 6 o'clock at night to finally get her kid, so that's how that goes. I'm going to come about this from a different way, so, we love our bus drivers and all that, this is all because of money, well, money comes from enrollment, and enrollment is going down, and as a board, I feel like you're coming at this at defense, you're never going to win the game at defense, you will win that at offense, we need kids, we need to enroll them, I am kind of just wondering why that isn't on the docket, the agenda at every single meeting, there should be an ambassadors committee, not the Brandon 2025, a strict ambassadors committee at that school, with parents and community members, they have shirts that say ambassador on the back that are at every event that say, hey, we love Brandon, come talk to me about Brandon schools, we want to get your kids involved, we are the cheerleaders, us parents are going to get the enrollment up, us parents and the school employees, you are basically pushing all of us away with strict arms, saying, nope, sorry, we're hurting you right now, we're hurting our loyal employees, we're pushing back what the parents want because of money, when they should be the opposite, you should be pulling, you should be saying, holy cow, we have 14 drivers with over 10 years' experience, we have seven drivers with over 20 years' experience, look at our employees, they're amazing, come to our school, they will keep you safe, we see them at weddings, we invite them to our weddings, I mean, these drivers are more than it, but it's not the drivers, it's everybody, it's the teachers, it's the secretaries, but if you push us away, we can't be those ambassadors, and I really would like to see a whole committee driven to get enrollment up so that we can stop cutting, we have to stop cutting, the only way to do that is to get more students, where is the plan for that? Where are you telling us to be cheerleaders? I am a huge big mouth, I am huge, and when I love something, I love something, so I want to be talking to people that are like, oh, I don't know, we're switching schools for my high school, or my junior high school, or not just kindergartners, everybody, and you know what you guys are going to say? You know what? I've got a committee at every single school, these are our Brandon ambassadors, they can answer any question, they will come out to your house and meet you, we, they have community events, they help, we have families in our, in our, in our elementary that have cancer, they have deaths, they have, you know, sickness or, or issues, these ambassadors should be connected with them, helping it, so that when those families feel that love, they're telling their friends and their friends, I feel like Brandon is my family, we have Ortonville Strong, I don't know if you're on the Facebook page for them, why Brandon as a school is not connected with Ortonville Strong hands-in-hand is beyond me, Ortonville, hashtag Ortonville Strong should be Brandon schools motto, I mean, the louder we can cheer for Brandon, the more enrollment, the more money, we stop the cuts, we respect our employees, and as a community in general, it just is better, if we keep cutting it and keep cutting our drivers, I don't want to tell my kids that, I'm going to make you guys tell my kids that, I don't want to tell them, we love Ms. Chris, we have a picture of her dog in our house, I said, we love the dog! I mean, these are our family, we have to think outside the box, you guys have to try a little bit harder to think, not what can we cut, how can we bring it in, and have active committees on how to do that.
Thank you. I just sort of piggyback, I guess, off of what Krista just said, there are so many things going on, I know that this, right now, you guys, we're listening to you, but, you know, I was talking, did you know that we have the Wall of Fame that acknowledges the Brandon Brad alumni that have done something extremely successful, not just necessarily in our community, but, you know, whether it was in the military, whether it was in chemistry, I mean, there are, whether it's the Cook Dairy Family, I mean, there, there is a lot of positive that we're trying to get out that, and I guess news or information, the B G Y coming up, recognition dinner, but maybe that's what we need, our more ambassadors, and, and I went to the P T O and V T A meetings at the 2 elementary, there is so much going on that's good here, there is so much, and I will tell you, for me, and I meant this when I replied my email, it is nice to hear good things about our people, you know, yes, our bus drivers, but I, there's a couple that expanded to teachers and whatever, I'm so glad that we have people that are so supportive of our staff, and we have good people, but, I, you know, that's, I guess, at least that's what I wanted to say.
I didn't sign in, but I would like to speak if that's possible.
Please, I'll let you, if you state your name.
Julie Bowdwell.
Okay, why don't you come on up here?
Up here or do I?
Up to the podium, so everybody can hear you.
My name's Julie Bowdwell, I currently have two sons in the Brandon School District. Two months ago, one of my children decided that they were going to stay after school, they were supposed to stay after school for weightlifting, however, one decided he wasn't going to go to weightlifting. About 3:45, I got a call from my other son, who couldn't find the other one, he didn't show up. As a parent, not knowing where your child is at, and he's supposed to be somewhere, it's terrifying, especially when that child has special needs. I lost my work, and I ran to the school, I couldn't get in, I pounded on the door and told a student, let me in, which is probably not a security thing, or a security issue that should be addressed. I came in through, I think it was the pool area, I immediately got lost, I'm used to coming in the front door, pushing the buzzer, they direct me. I was so scared, because at this point in time, I was spending two and a half hours, I couldn't find him, I didn't know where he was, I was in contact with Mr. Hubble, we were, I was trying to get through the school, and I came up to a D M R employee, and I asked him if he had a supervisor that he could page, or page my son over the P A, he didn't know how, I said, how do I get to the office crew here, I'm lost, he points and says, go that way. When you're looking for a child that's lost, and I'd already called the bus garage, my bus driver didn't know, they, he wasn't on the bus, so I knew he didn't ride the bus home. They called me, the bus drivers, and they knew, they knew who my son was, they were looking for him. Hubble was going to dispatch three cars to go find him, thank God, Mr. Stevens was in the office, and he opened the door, and he paged my son, who was in a classroom study, he was safe, but I knew I had backup, I knew I had the bus drivers, they were driving down the road, they knew who he was, that D M R employee did not know who my son was, he didn't even know how to page for help, so I asked you to take that into consideration. How many problems have you had with the M R employee? Has there been any over the times that you've had them there?